Off we go. Good evening, everyone. I'll have Brandon Select Board to order for October 25th. Thanks to everybody for attending tonight, whether in person or by Zoom. Is there a motion relative to the agenda? Mr. Wyman moved, Mr. Coolidge seconded. Any changes to be made? I do have one additional executive session, which I would recommend we do after the warrant executive session, so 12A, and that would be under the same section, 313A1, and it will be regarding a grievance with the police union. So it would be the same motion as we've had last meeting. Any other changes to be made? If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as we've just amended it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. You guys have it. Item two, the minutes of October 11th. Motion for Mr. Wyman and a second for Mr. Markowski to approve the minutes of the October 11th board meeting as they were submitted. Any errors or omissions? None heard. All in favor of adopting them as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. You guys have it. Item three, the town manager's report. Mr. Atkinson.
Smart Court, 401, October 11th to October 22nd. Attended the BTCMA conference in Stowe on October 14th and 15th. Topics of discussion were policing, ARPA funding, and declaration of inclusion. VLCT Executive Director Ted Brady, who is new as the director, presented a new strategic plan and priorities for the league. Just on declarations of inclusion, there's only 14 towns that have adopted it in Vermont, and we were the second ones to do it, so that was kind of nice that we heard about that. Road paving was completed last week on High Pond Road, Florence Road, Railroad, Adams, Briggs Lane, Mill Lane, Middle Road, and Wood Lane. We also did a sizable patch on the North Street held by the post office. Attended an ARPA webinar on October 19th. A couple of hot topics were VHFA. We'll be offering financial assistance on past due mortgage, tax, and utility accounts. They're now allowing the communication in the districts to partner with utility companies for broadband expansion and additional sewer funding for wastewater treatment plants that apparently are noncompliant, which we don't know what we can't qualify for. Staff has started working on their FY22 budget proposals in anticipation of the upcoming budget meetings. And I have a couple more things I wanted to add. Submitted four applications for the new Newton Road property buyouts through hazard mitigation, so those were sent last Monday. And I did get a proposal from Houston O'Neill on the traffic late signal timing and analysis and changes. The cost associated with that is almost $14,000, $13,373. That's for a study and to make changes that East Coast signals will be doing the changes on. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the town manager from the board?
So is that traffic study something that's going to happen? Or is that something that we just have a proposal for?
You guys need to hold on whenever you want it to happen, so it's out of my spending.
And I have a question about the traffic station in the back. As I drove down there tonight, it looks like there's a light in the parking lot that is... I thought it was on all the time, but it was a little squirrely. Is it a motion-sensitive light?
Well, there's going to be five lights down there. They're not done with it yet, so...
Yeah, I wasn't sure if the one down there was supposed to be on all the time or whether it...
The light on the pole?
Yeah.
It's not our light, so actually I believe the bank put that light in when they were parking down there, so it could just be flickering to come on, but we'll have five new lights down there when we're done with that parking area, so...
Great, and we're waiting on paving because of the season and whatnot?
We're waiting for that, and we're waiting for it to dry out a little bit down there. It's pretty wet, so we did some ditching to try to get some runoff to go over the...
It looks good the way it's coming together.
Any others? Questions from the public or comments? Yes, Mr. Moore.
Oh yeah, so I was asked by the town manager, I was normally guys are used to having a rec report. This one was rather lengthy, and so I figured I would have an opportunity to give you the rec report, which is normally part of the town manager report. This weekend saw the end of a very successful fall youth sports season. Without volunteers, we would not be able to provide enrichment activities for our aspiring athletes. Thank you to the following community members. Our U6 soccer coaches Miranda Pauquette, Jonathan Frye, William Kilpeck. Our U8 soccer coaches Ron and Cassandra Kobel, Bill Guy. U10 Brett Wilber, U10 girls soccer Lily Bixby and Justin Martell. Our U12 boys soccer is Darcy Weisabek and Wendy Roe Feldman. Our U12 girls soccer coaches are Stacy Doucette and Carmine Van Eaton. Our first and second grade NFL flag Caleb Griswold and Joe DeZebre. Our third and fourth grade flag football is Duke Whitney, Scott Quinaville, and Daniel Whitney. Our fifth and sixth grade flag football Duke Whitney, Scott Quinaville, Gary Benoit, Matt Mallory, Daniel Whitney, and Kevin Bligher. Our seventh and eighth grade flag football Duke Whitney and Kevin Bligher. And our fourth through eighth grade cheerleading Sarah Whitney and Erica Moe. And again, I mean, these are volunteers that stepped up and provided, you know, a dozen hours a week for six weeks to enrich kids' lives, and you know, without them, we wouldn't have at least the cheap programming that we have, the economically viable programming that we have. So again, I want to thank them, make sure they get noticed. You see them in the public, say, hey, thanks for doing your part. Brandon Rec Dance classes with Ms. Michaela will be starting this week. Classes in ballet, tap, and hip-hop will be held at the Brandon Town Hall downstairs meeting space at the Pillared Pilates Studio for kids aged three to 11. Sign up is at branderek.com. Spooksville is back on October 29th from 5:30 to 7 at Esteban Park. The largest trunk-or-tree event in the region will be even bigger this year. If you're interested in being a candy wizard, one who distributes candy from a space on the field, register at branderek.com. And again, our own emergency services, people will be there, Brandon Rescue, Brandon Police Department, Brandon Fire Department will all be there to make sure it's a safe event. And one final note, as we make the move toward indoor programming, the Brandon Rec has updated our policies to reflect the realities of the ongoing global pandemic. The state of Vermont has issued recommendations and guidelines for individuals, communities, and businesses. The Brandon Rec Department adheres to all state mandated safety measures as well as best practices as per the latest recommendations from the Vermont Department of Health. And a particular note, I quote, "Wearing a mask helps protect you and the people around you from getting or spreading COVID-19. A mask helps contain your respiratory droplets and can keep them from reaching other people. COVID-19 can spread even if a person does not have any symptoms. If you are fully vaccinated, it is still possible to get and transmit the virus." The Health Department currently recommends wearing a mask when you are in public indoor settings because a significant portion of the population remains unvaccinated and the more transmissible Delta variant is spreading. How this impacts the Brandon Rec participants. Until further notice, all instructors, officials, rec staff, volunteers, participants, and spectators will be required to wear a mask while indoors for Brandon Rec activities regardless of vaccination status. And that is my rec report.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Further questions or comments from the public, either for the town manager or recreation and economic development? Any questions from Zoom or comments from Zoom?
So is this the public comment participation?
I'm not, I wasn't there yet, but I'm about to. Want to start? So again, we'll move on from the town manager's report to the actual public comment participation. Items not on the agenda, anything you'd like to bring to the board's attention? Sounds like Mr. Galloway might have something.
Well, just because of the new news from Dave with the estimate or the quote from on the public traffic, the traffic plate. I'm wondering if it makes sense to either talk about it now or whether we should put it in our future agenda? So are there thoughts about whether we should go forward with exploring how to solve the issues of traffic in our town?
Personally, I think you're fine. Years ago, they wanted to slow the traffic down, but they slowed down, and now people want to go faster. They're burning, stayed up until the last meeting.
Well, I'm certainly not interested in going faster, but there's several times that I've been coming home from, you know, the north, from Route 7, and it's been backed up as far as the liquor store. That seems like a long line.
But it doesn't take you long to get from the liquor store out through them.
Three or four traffic lights.
So what's that, six minutes, 10 minutes?
Oh, it's not bad, but it's...
You know, that's, and believe me, I'm not, I'm not favored, never was in favor of the lights, but I think that, I think it's crazy to go out and spend more money to keep conducting studies. They've studied it, and that's my opinion. Let's just leave it alone, leave it as it is.
I agree with that. I think that it's too expensive to, we're not going to gain much out of it. I would hope, you know, hoping it'll get better, but I don't see it.
I know you have concerns, and so it's true.
That's a lot of money for minimal improvements.
I tend to think the risk would be that if we made a change, there would be then some impact that would be adverse to other people, and we would have the same discussion about people not being able to get off of Carver Street or get out of the grocery store or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it was that bad last, last fall through the winter as I think our worst time busy as time is during the summer. You know, that's...
It's true, it's true. My original hope was that we could tweak it ourselves, but the $14,000 makes it prohibitive to think about having to hire someone to change it.
And there'd be no guarantee, any changes can be made after a study either, so...
Right, right.
But on the upside, on the upside of it, when you've got that one in traffic, it's back here. Anytime that I've been stuck back here in traffic, the upside that I see of it, unless I'm up through town, I don't see a practice spot available. And as far as I'm concerned, that's an upside because that means that we're busy. And businesses are busy in town, which, like I said, I consider that to be an upside.
Comment?
So I'm sure Mike can see this as well, working under Route 7 again this summer, that there's far more traffic under Route 7 than there has ever been. Even going from Middlebury at any, well, most of the time today. I mean, I have the same, you know, busy traffic schedule what we do, minus 15 minutes either way. It's increased everywhere, and having gone to Burlington and Stowe lately for conferences, and I've not been out forever, traffic's bad everywhere. And I, coming down through Route 7, when I had the conference in South Burlington, it was a Wednesday at 2:30 when I came to the Charlotte Four Corners light and sat through the light twice. I used to work up there four days a week, never sat through that light. So traffic is just, there's more of it. You're seeing it in Rockland, we're seeing it here, we're seeing it in Middlebury, we're seeing it, you know, Stowe's crazy, Stowe and Waterbury. So I really think the increase in people getting out is what's causing it. And Chief and I have talked about this a few times, that that surge is not very long. It's pretty short-lived, and you can kind of judge it by school getting out and then folks getting out of work. If there's events in the park where people are using more pedestrian crossings, that triggers the lights, people backing out of parking areas, people turning into Lot A heading south because now they're waiting for the traffic north before they turn. So there's a lot of variables in why the traffic's stopping. Even if we didn't have the lights on, I think you'd still find some of those stops just by people's driving habits.
Yeah, I see all that. In fact, I often feel guilty pulling at Carver because I'll pull up to the light, and they'll stop almost instantly and let me out, which is, I mean, I'm very grateful that Carver isn't, but I'm just trying to think through it. I appreciate it basically.
That was the tweak we had to make early on because cars were backing up on Union Street especially. That was like the first adjustment that was made, and cars couldn't get out of Hannaford or Wrighton, and it wasn't clearing in enough time. The other thing I've noticed too, because I've been watching it a lot again, if there are no cars in the turning lane to go on to Union and Carver, then when the, when 7 opens, they both open, North and South open at the same time. So it's that turn, it's that one part, the car turning, but you have to put it in there somewhere.
Right, right.
You know, if we put it on the end, then it's just going to slow something down on the other part, so...
Okay, I'll think about it, thanks.
So I think the board is at a consensus to take no action regarding the proposal from the engineers, but certainly thank Dave for following up and getting an expeditious proposal from them.
I would like to see that, it's right there, too.
Okay, Dave's got the complete catastrophe there if anybody wants to see it. Further public comment, items not on the agenda, stuff you'd like to talk about tonight. Representative Jerome, anything from the Zoom world?
Yes.
She knows she knew.
No, thank you. I'm just getting ready now for the slinter to start in January, and I'll be holding constituent meetings on the number six, both in Brandon and Pittsburgh. So I'm the sixth at 10 o'clock in the morning at the Brandon Rec House Library. If anyone would like to come out and meet with me. I'll be there to sort of give an update of what I expect for the next session, and then ready to talk about any concerns or constituent requests. So before seeing you on Route 6, and I'll plan on continuing doing that through the live session, meeting at least once a month in every one of the three towns that I represent. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And Representative Jerome, on a scale of 1 to 10, how is the audio on the Zoom tonight? Can you hear everything that's going on?
Yes, it's great. No, it's great. A little, when you're having a conversation with one another, it can be a little bit hard to hear, but generally it's really good.
Okay.
I appreciate you, and I appreciate you doing this, continuing Zoom, because I'll be, it's much easier for me to be able to do this on private session to make sure I'm here and be able to kind of meet.
Fantastic. We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thanks.
And thanks to Bill and Dave for improving on the audio quality. That's helpful. That was something.
It's the tablecloth, I think.
It's the tablecloth, thanks.
I like the tablecloth, but I just love...
Thanks, Stephanie. This is the artist look. They'll be moving into a festive holiday look.
I'll say something about turkeys in the next meeting, but I'm not really bad, we're already here.
Other folks with items to discuss tonight that don't appear on the agenda? You can always come back to it, you can always interrupt, it's pretty informal, and we have public comment available each agenda item. Item five, appointment to the Budget Committee. There's interest been submitted to the board through the town manager, and we appreciate all the interest from three different folks in Brandon who are all intelligent folks and civic-minded and willing to give some time to build in the Brandon municipal budget. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to accept all three.
Motion for Mr. Wyman and a second from Mr. Markowski to appoint Doug Bailey and Neil Sillings.
It's Doug, though.
It's Doug.
Oh, okay. I saw it down.
Doug Bailey, Neil Sillings, and Peter Werner to the Budget Committee. Is there discussion?
I'm grateful for people interested in serving the community this way.
Absolutely, yeah. So they all were made aware of the budget workshop dates that we set last time? Or it was part of the minutes anyway? I'll check in, okay, perfect. Ready to vote. All in favor of appointing Neil Sillings, Doug Bailey, and Peter Werner to the Budget Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. You guys have it. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Neil. Item six, consider appointment of Emergency Management Director and Emergency Services Representative to the Regional Emergency Management Committee.
So if you guys remember, I brought this up to you a little over a month ago, that there's a new regional emergency management committee, sort of based around RPCs. And instead of just the EMD for town being the representative, they wanted one emergency services person as well. I did speak to Tom Kilpeck about it, and he said that he would be interested in sitting on that board with me. So it still requires a select board appointment. There's no term limit on it or anything, so just looking for that.
Is there a motion to appoint the chief of the Fire Department, Tom Kilpeck, to be Brandon's Emergency Services Representative to the Regional Emergency Management Committee? Mr. Coolidge makes the motion, a second, second from Mr. Wyman, any discussion? Thanks to Chief Kilpeck for being willing to serve. Ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. You guys have it. Item seven, ARPA project discussion. I'll just ask Mr. Atkinson to let us know the progress here.
Sure, I have two things in your packets tonight. One is the estimated cost for construction to connect Fire District 1 and Fire District 2. That's the email attachment here from Jason Maroc at Otter Creek Engineering. And I also have the agreement for engineering services for the Newton Road pump station. A little bit about my spending limits, so it's here for you guys. And that, those are the only two that I have information on right now. So I have talked to Luana Aldrich and Elliot about getting something for the sewer connection down that highway. He doesn't see that as being a costly or huge project. And I do not have numbers yet from TNK on Union Street, so...
Is there a reason that Union Street didn't appear on the list on the agenda?
Because I don't have it in the board yet.
Okay. But you don't have for the solar, but that's on the agenda.
I was asked to put that on, I believe, by Tim or somebody. Somebody asked me to put that on, and I have to look back.
So before we get to that...
Proposed landfill solar project.
Okay, right, that's, it's in the packet. So before we go on, maybe we should take them in the order that they came in the packet, is that okay? So with this, from Jason Maroc at Otter Creek Engineering, this is about the connection of Brandon Fire District Number 2 and Brandon Fire District Number 1. And the bottom line is $70,160. And you said, Dave, that this was a construction estimate. Are there expected to be like engineering costs associated with this also, or not?
I believe the engineering's already been done.
Okay. So... So this would be basically the total cost of doing that if we were to put some more money in?
I believe Fire District 2 was already done the engineering with Otter Creek Engineering out.
Yeah, we did a spoken study with one of the other gentlemen at Otter, well, Robert Clark, a couple of years ago when I was still on that board, so... Because we're looking at doing it in a pump station, and then it turned into the folks suggesting doing this connection, so...
Okay, any other questions about this estimate for construction to connect Fire District Number 2, which is, is it just the Forest Brook neighborhood? Yeah, and Fire District Number 1. Any other questions? If not, the other, the next thing in the packet is from Aldrich and Elliot. It is for the Newton Road pump station, and this is just engineering services.
This is just engineering, yeah.
Engineering services estimate for $10,700 to consider, what, should we, is it replacement basically?
Oh, yeah, the replacement, something we're going to have to do regardless of what, who we kept money from for this. You guys know the history of that pump station all too well. We might be able to move it up the street a little bit. I'm going to have to check with FEMA to see if they can actually put that structure on another lot. So, but we're going to do it no matter what.
Okay. I think we're at the point of, we're just kind of gathering stuff, right, at this point? So we're just getting the information.
It's probably going to be about a $500,000 job for that. You know, that's new pumps and everything, computer system, so...
Yeah, do you think that all is ARPA?
Oh, it is, yeah.
All $500,000?
Yep.
And so with the first one that we talked about would be probably not partnering with Brandon Fire District Number 1 and 2, but granting to them? Because we don't really have the whole water supply, is that true?
So in the past, Steph, is what we've done with the Congress 7 project, where we only did the first segment of Segment 6, if you remember, there was that water line that went behind like the Chinese restaurant that operates here. We just did a memorandum with them, and that's kind of how, or we did it with Park Street, too, that if there were costs that were directly to the fire district, then we're covering, you know, vice versa. So we could just do another memorandum on that to... And probably the engineers can draft that up for us, so...
Okay. And with the Newton Road pump station, this would be basically us as the sewer commissioners.
Yep, just like the wastewater.
Yep.
Good, that's all us.
And then any other questions on the Newton Road pump station situation?
One thing I'd like to add is I have talked to Steve and Tim at Wastewater on this, and they're very grateful, too, that we're looking at all of these other sewer projects, and even having dealt with Brookdale and some other things. Because of some of this equipment being in the early 90s when it was installed, that they, they're trying to sort of circumvent the problems, too, if there's total failure. So they really appreciate the fact that we're sitting in there, having these discussions and moving forward and stuff.
Great to hear this.
How about the third item, the landfill solar project, which has like an introductory preliminary discussion here? And this is from the Energy Committee?
Yes.
Thank you. Jim?
So actually, the suggestion about the solar to operate the wastewater system was based on a recommendation of Acorn Energy, who's put a lot of installations in another town. With their thought that it would be approved, potentially approved by the ARPA funding. However, as Dave pointed out, that is not feasible. Apparently, it's, according to Eric Hall, it's due to the, well, it may be feasible if it was part of the sewer system itself. As a separate off-site installation, it's not acceptable. And I understand we aren't in a position to put solar at that site.
We've tried it. That's how we ended up with the array that we have, is no, there wasn't a solar pump that owned a touch of down there because it's floodwater.
Yeah, so, so I tried to indicate that we didn't need to have that proposal come before this board. The proposal I wanted to talk about tonight is the using funds to further the town's goals for energy efficiency. You know, what our task, one of our own, yes.
Okay, just talking before we go to CARV. So we're now talking about those landfill solar projects, but funded outside of ARPA?
Oh, that's another subject that...
No, that's different.
That's a...
And that's not ARPA discussion.
That's not an ARPA discussion.
It's a different discussion. So, okay, so, so this is the second sheet in the packet. You look behind the sheet that says proposed landfill solar project.
Yeah, we're trying to steal an idea from ARPA.
So the first page of this is inoperable?
That is correct.
Second page is now what we're talking about?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. So one of our tasks is to analyze and make suggestions to the select board about strategic choices which might help the town of Brandon reduce its carbon footprint. That's our, part of our mission statement. And we are looking to, we're also charged with organizing community outreach activities to inform the community about opportunities to save energy. So in that vein, we are asking for the select board to allocate 2% of ARPA funds to use as matching incentives for an efficiency Vermont programs to help people buy energy-efficient appliances and suchlike, as well as a portion to go to covering $100 of the Neighbor Works Heat Squad Home Energy Audit Program that is very helpful for people who want to start buttoning up their homes more effectively and efficiently. This is a first glance draft proposal. We wish to finalize that at our next Energy Committee meeting and get it into wording that is in a motion that can be passed to do that. We wish to modify a few things, like it makes sense to emphasize this as being for moderate low-income residents. Put maybe a cap on the efficiency Vermont allocation to $150 or $200 as opposed to, you know... as opposed to, you know, seven, eight hundred dollars per individual for a heat pump. And so we want, we want to thrash some of these pieces out. We need Dave's input also about, hey, how can we make this so it's cut and dry and mechanical that, hey, you can send in a efficiency Vermont receipt saying that you've gotten your refund and then someone can write a check to do the matching so it's not a burden to the administration or minimize the burden to administration over the couple of years we'll probably get take to roll this out.
So at this point, we would consider this as like a foundation kind of proposal where you've identified above two percent or twenty-five thousand dollars of ARPA money to be designated for these two different forks of efficiency for.
Right, and we probably shouldn't try to distinguish a specific amount for either.
But those two things, that those are two areas where you would see this twenty-five thousand dollar.
Right.
What's interesting is that the main group has shown that it fits into ARPA. And I think that's perhaps a relevant point because it's a relatively small piece of our ARPA chunk. But it's, it's a way to, to touch on some of the ARPA criteria, which is to get a low-incomee and energy efficiency.
So the Energy Committee will be kind of further developing.
Well, yes.
Conversation with Dave and.
Looking for your input about, hey, this is something worth considering. Or if you're saying, hey, we don't want to touch it, that's, I'd like to know that before we put more energy in. If there's a, just a kind of a re.
Yeah. Any feedback from the board on the initial thought of a twenty-five thousand dollar take of the ARPA toward matching two existing programs, I think is what it sounds like, right? I mean, I mean, these are, what I'm saying is this isn't like Brandon kind of reinventing something.
That's correct.
Two successful programs.
Tagged.
In Neighbor Works Heat Squad. And this is kind of boosting them to the point where it will be more beneficial to Brandon folks who are in this program.
Yes.
Thoughts?
I think we should wait to find out what Union Street project is before we decide to spend anything.
Oh, I don't, I don't think we're vote to commit to anything tonight. I think we're just gathering information. And I think the Energy Committee is just looking for, like, does this pass the first hurdle as far as, you know, would the board consider it or is the board feeling like it's not something to consider?
I think it's considerable. I mean, as I said, I think we need to look at our other projects we've been on the board. But if on the book, I mean, if there's funds here, if there's funds here, we'll dumb it. I think it's something we can look at.
I, I think we should consider it. I would think that it's, I think it's very wise to be sort of piggybacking on two existing successful.
Oh, yes.
Schemes or, you know. I think that's really good idea.
It's certainly a way to, to spread the benefits around some in our community.
And it also takes a lot of the, you know, qualification part out of our hands and basically some other agencies kind of screening.
Right.
So would we be working at sort of like a rebate program where at the end of their audit or whatever it seems like?
Right, if someone gets a receipt from the, that Heat Squad saying that they paid their a hundred fifty dollars, they'd get a check from ARPA funds to help them take that next step, actually.
So the last webinar I attended last week, there was quite a bit of discussion with more housing options. I was a little admitted by the title because it was how to let, how to use your, how to leverage your ARPA money for, and it really wasn't about that, which is like more programs that were available, but not sort of a match type thing. I thought was a little misleading, but Josh Hansler did mention that there were quite a few programs that they're gonna start throwing up. Probably we'll see him on the league's websites and we'll start getting emails on him, too. So I think they're looking at some more creative ways for housing with ARPA. But it's still, still pretty much in its infancy stage at this point.
Any public input on the, on the concept as it has come to us? I think conceptually, the Energy Committee should kind of keep developing it.
Great.
And come back and, and as we've kind of come to consensus tonight, like, you know, this, this is early enough that nobody's saying yes to anything.
Understood.
Don't know what the priority list is gonna be. Chair?
Thank you.
Go ahead. I think still looking at this type of program, maybe moving forward even without ARPA, to have the Energy Committee, you know, working more with folks like this with Neighbor Works and Prok and.
Efficiency Vermont.
Efficiency Vermont. I know it was kind of started early on before the pandemic broke out, that we were trying to do like, I think, an EV single, lawn mowers, you know, other stuff, like, we did all research on some of the other towns around the area that are doing what their Energy Committees are doing. And like Bristol and Middlebury, we always get, you know, compared to them, have some really good programs. If that's what they've been doing, it's really kind of getting that sort of low-hanging fruit with, like, I think Bristol had a thing where they wanted to try to get those ten folks to do like a sort of button-up Bristol-type thing, is what they're doing with Buttonup. I think that's a big goal to, to achieve. And, you know, maybe even with the budget stuff that we look at, some sort of, you know, what does the Energy Committee need for whatever, like that way.
We hope that.
Those, those small programs are what I think are the ones that are gonna affect most people.
And we hope to have some specific requests along those lines coming out in our next meetings. Maybe one of our topics on the agenda is, are there budgetary requests that would support just what you're talking about? It's great.
So along those lines, when, in what department? So we don't, we don't have, we don't have a line for Energy Committee in the operating budget right now. So with what department head should the Energy Committee start or come to the board? Do you know what I'm saying? I just don't want the whole process of writing.
It would probably be unique.
Oh, okay.
Unless Noel wants it.
So the Energy Committee is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Which also has no budget?
Well, kind of.
Well, we pay legal and advertising and stuff, but that's pretty much it. And it's like generally.
Well, we'll cover like if they do planning grants, you know, like when we do, we do the town plan and stuff, like there are, we do do matches for that. We've done it through the years. We haven't done one in quite some time, but.
Has it been specifically funded in line or is it funded out of like?
No, it's usually out, I mean, it's not a lot of money anyway. Like, you know, like when we do a town plan, we're great with ARPA, it's like thirty-five hundred bucks or something. And we have a match for it, so.
My, my desire is just that we don't get through the budget planning thing and then have the Energy Committee have not come to the budget workshop because there was no department that it fit.
Well, I think we're gonna see, and Mr. Moore, I actually, I think we were talking about, I think we're gonna see some of the other committees in town probably come into some budget meetings. So it's something we're gonna want.
So are you going to like sort out who is which nights? Because you've always been the one who decides which departments get it done.
We've actually already got a calendar going, so hopefully at the next board meeting, we'll have a, we'll have a list for everybody.
And are you actively reaching out to the various boards and committees?
Well, we've, well, we've actually talked to a few of them. So what do we have more?
Because again, if all of a sudden there's a tree committee that's getting funded or an Energy Committee that's getting funded in the budget, I just don't want some committee that didn't hear about this to feel like, well, how come they weren't invited to the workshops?
Well, tree we fund through buildings and grounds anyway. We've always done that. So we're looking at like DBA, like we've always funded something for DBA. And really, the only other ones we have are Energy Committee.
Historic preservation.
Yeah, well, yeah, they don't always spend much money.
I mean, does the, like, are we talking about things like the DRV, the Trustees of Public Funds? Like, are these other groups that are official entities?
They're not gonna be public out there. DRV is there for a specific purpose. But I don't think they're gonna hold any mixers or, both their funding, they're, they're like a judge and jury board, really. So.
But you get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Although, as I said, I really think we're gonna need to look at this, like moving forward. You know, if we have these committees and not even Energy Committees, anything else, like, we've got, we shouldn't be forming these committees and not doing anything with them in a positive way for folks in town. You know, we've built, we've done, I mean, look what we've done with REC in the last seven years and economic development. You know, that's, you know, we'll kind of, we'll start out small. I mean, we've seen the benefits of it. But I think with it done right and a little funding, not a lot, you know, like what we did two years ago, we threw a grant match money in our budget that was never there before. You know, we see the benefits of that over time. So I, I think it's a good thing to look at.
I'm not arguing. I just want to make sure that there's like equity of access to the various volunteer groups that we asked to, important tasks for us. Yes, Neil.
Um, is this something?
Budget Committee cannot be funded, Neil.
I, I was wondering if you talked about this with the tree and tree group. Is this something that you're supposed to warn him on the town bulletin board?
Well, that's why I'm kind of going through a date is like, is there outreach or is there just responding?
Well, so the interest I'm getting with the tree committee, it's not really a select board appointed board. Like, you know, the Energy Committee is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. You guys are sort of, you know, like free range. Like, you know, it's really, it's like a group that got together that thought this would be a great idea. But it's, it's never come down to like the board appointing anyone on the tree committee.
Yeah, I wasn't actually referring to the tree committee, which does not exist as far as I know. So, so, you know, just in general, you're talking about other committees, some of which you might not have a firm grasp of or whatever. I'm just posting a warning so that you can say, well, we let everybody know.
So I don't want this to become like the appropriation kind of outside of an appropriations vote. Do you know what I mean? Like, I, I think that if the town has official boards and committees that need some support, I think that's what I'm prepared to see the budget workshops encompass. If there are groups in town that are looking for some taxpayer funding outside of being an official town board or committee, I think they've got to go and ask for an appropriation with the taxpayers. That, that's been the usual way to.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I'm not trying to steer you in any particular way to saying that you were expressing, I think, that there might be some groups that would be interested and might come back and say, well, we didn't know about it. And this would be a way to put a bottom on them. Well, yes, we did.
Unfortunately, we only have a handful that we can easily reach out to with an email.
Like, you could reach the chair of each of those.
Yeah, but that's the thing, we're in contact with most of them all the time anyway, so.
Yeah, and we can, we can certainly post them.
Post a board and clerk's office, those kinds of things. Well, when we, when we do it, well, we just post them the dates for budget workshops. Budget workshops, but we can, we can find that a little bit, too.
So as we get to the end of the ARPA discussion, I wonder if I could just throw this in now, which is it? I'm throwing in the towel of hoping that we can get solar through ARPA because I think the writing on the wall is pretty clear that there's just no way we can get solar paid for with ARPA money. But what happened in the process of me looking into using ARPA money for solar was the realization that it's just a spectacularly good idea to do solar for our municipal needs as Dave has already shown us with the Green Lantern project, which, you know, brought to fruition and is serving the town wonderfully. And I would like to suggest that we get some kind of a working group to look into the possibility of bonding a solar project that could serve the municipal needs. In other words, we'd be a captive customer of the energy. And the, the numbers that I've gotten out of the Bristol project that I've been studying shows a payback of twelve years. And if we bought it for twenty, we instantly have the ability to pay back the bond with no taxpayer funds. And we're saving money for the town with electricity. And it just seems like the wisest, most prudent thing to do as a, a board trying to, you know, have foresight in, in how we get our energy. It's economic and it's environmental because ultimately, we're gonna want to be meeting our 2050 goal with more and more solar. So is there any appetite for forming a, a working committee, two of us maybe, to, to, to look into the possibility of bonding solar?
I would, I would support it. Yeah, Phil?
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Guy, as the Chair of the Prudential Committee for the Brandon Fire District Number One, we actually talked about this at our last meeting and talked about the possibility of reaching out to people because we have tremendous energy need between the, between the water pumps and we're spending a lot of money. So Ray was open to the idea of talking to somebody about the possibility of a solar project. So I would suggest certainly, like, I mean, I don't know where we are with our own energy needs and the solar project that we have, how much we spend. But regardless, reach out to the Fire, Fire District because I think you might find a willing partner in them to maybe make that happen.
Well, and just to, we, we will, the Energy Committee is looking at and trying to get educated about community solar. It would be a project where people can't put solar on their own houses or, and hopefully the state legislature is coming through with a program that will help low-income people get involved with community solar without a large upfront payment. Hopefully Stephanie's nodding her head, I don't know. But so, and community solar would be a great avenue for, you know, an organization that, I mean, that might be complicated to do through a town bond. I don't know how that would work.
Well, I, I see this as two separate discussions.
Oh, for sure.
I see community solar as being a, a different can of worms. And I see municipal solar as being something we've already done a piece of, and would be a smaller lift. And that's why I guess I'd like to see them as two, two discussions.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, well, so I think moving forward with our town highway perhaps that we've been talking about is the perfect, the perfect thing to do, like a net zero building. And I, and I think that's a start. The problem with everything else we have is we're running out of land. You know, the land we own is, is too wet for anything. And all of our buildings are historic. So we run into a lot of, well, the problem with the landfill, we have three phases down there. So, you know, it's a very limited, and again, like, I have looked into that with ANR to see if we can do it. There's ways to do something down there. Well, I also like the idea of someone else doing it for us, you know, like we did with Green Lantern. It didn't cost us anything. We had the land. And I've, I've talked to, you know, Dave Carpenter at Green Lantern a few times about the transfer state or the old dump area. And it's, it's just kind of a difficult area to, to do something of any size that they want to do there unless we were on a three phase, so.
Yeah.
Well, plus the landfill is, I mean, it's really costly when you go over an eight percent slope. And I'm pretty sure that's.
It's flat on top, though. It's a pretty good size once you get on a.
Yeah, about an acre, though. Needs to be three.
It's an acre, but don't lose anything for now.
I mean, the other potential area you have would be, it has to clear, is that land in the Legion. That's pretty, pretty rugged, but it's rugged, but I mean, it's, it's got the height and.
I mean, it seems, it seems to be worth looking into this some because the benefits could actually be sizable for the community.
Well, and another avenue on the land would be Solar Fest is looking to secure at three parcels that are gonna be way bigger than they need. And I mentioned that, hey, that we might want to do community solar in concert with them and/or the town might be interested. And they'd be very open to working with, with the town on, on the, on doing some sort of solar for their. So that's another option that may arise, hopefully.
So at this stage, I don't really know why we wouldn't want to at least explore the possibilities, you know, either funding it through a bond or funding it with some one percent or funding it in some way and see what the benefits to the town are. I don't know why we wouldn't do that. So I would, I would be supportive of it. Others?
I would, I mean, I definitely support exploring it. Just to help explore it, I just, the time isn't there for me.
Oh, okay.
Well, then I'll keep plugging along and finding information and bringing to the board. And I can assure you, I can get some more things for you before, we really have plenty of time before the March meeting to get this idea moved into a position that we either do or don't follow along.
So if you're willing to kind of do some background work, you know, I kind of would suggest talking with the town treasurer and just kind of what she.
suggest talking with the town treasurer and just kind of what she publishes in the town report book now, the bond issues that we have outstanding, see what kind of latitude we have left and maturity dates and those kinds of things.
Okay.
So we can talk about that intelligently with voters.
Well, there are a lot of old bonds on the waste lotterie that, let's see what it's combined.
Okay.
So there, there's still quite a good bond out there for that. We have our seven six ones.
But the second six one, we're, we're like 14 years ago, 20 year bond, right?
Well, remember, we added to that bond--
A certain amount, yeah.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand, I think, back five years ago or so.
Okay. Other public comment on that or anything ARCA related before we move away from ARCA? All right. How about the town school ballot mailing discussion? There's a slide that is in the packet talking about legislative body, which is the Select Board, may vote to mail a ballot for any local election to all active registered voters. And, sorry, the more important thing, the Select Board in each of the member towns of the school district must vote to approve the mailing of ballots to all school district voters. If they do so, the law states that the town clerk in each of the member towns is responsible for the mailing of the ballots, but all the costs associated with the mailing are borne by the school districts. So I think what we had talked about last time was that basically we need to authorize this vote, authorize this ballot for the upcoming election to be sent to all the voters with the school ballot so that the school district can then find out what the other towns want to do. And if all the towns are of the same mind, then they can proceed with the combined town school ballot mailing.
Right.
I don't know if I got that.
It has to be all our--
Has to be every budget-- For the school project.
Every town in the district has to, we have to send a school ballot out.
But we could do our town--
Together, script with the town ballot together.
Right. We can, but if the whole, if all the folks in the district don't approve it, then it doesn't happen.
Right. Because that's what, that's what we're talking about now, is sending the school and the town ballot out together.
You can vote on that, but we can't do it unless all of the towns vote together.
I get it.
So if you, you can support it, it just might not happen.
It seems, it seems like there's, the first vote is just us sending our own ballots out. The Select Board decides about mailing the local election ballots.
Well, well, yeah, we, we did it last year, but we can't.
And then--
But the school ballots, the whole district has to approve for them to be sent out by mail for any town in the district to do it. So every town has to say, yes, we want to draw our school ballots with our town ballots.
Right.
And if one town said, nah, we're not interested, it doesn't happen.
Yeah. So what I'm, I'm just drawing your attention to is that there's two things we're like voting on. One is that we send out our own ballots and one is we send out the school ballots. And the school ballots can only go out if everybody agrees. I get it.
Right. Well, I think that was the question that came last time was--
Well, we haven't passed the first one either. As I understand, we've passed-- What's the pleasure of the board?
I think a motion that we mail out all the local election ballots.
Is there a second? I'll second. Is there discussion?
I think it fosters participation in the democracy. And I, I think it's, it's what we discovered during COVID is that more people vote if you send them a ballot. And I would love to see more people participate.
Public comment? Further discussion on the board? Ready to vote? All in favor of mailing a ballot for the upcoming town meeting to all active registered voters of Brandon. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Abstentions?
Any answers?
I only heard two ayes.
I have a third.
There's a third aye? Mr. Markowski votes aye. Is there a no?
There would be no.
Mr. Coolidge votes no. Is there abstention?
No.
Mr. Wannan votes no. Okay. We got that? Three and two. How about, is there a motion relative to mailing this with the school districts as we've talked about?
Well, I would make a motion that we pass that with the understanding that all the towns and the degrees, because kind of like our town reports, there's efficiency if we can combine our mailing. And it's nice to be efficient enough in the community. So I made that motion that we, we also mail out the school board ballots with our ballots.
Is there a second? I'll second. Is there discussion? Public input? Mr. Carr?
Doesn't that have to, wouldn't that motion have to have the caveat that only there will be other--
Well, the law says it, you know.
I understand that it needs to be in the motion.
I don't think so. The law says it.
Otherwise, it's going to be mailed out and they just can't be used.
No, it's true that they wouldn't be mailed out unless the school board gave them the choice to mail out, I suppose. Any further discussion?
Can I just clarify?
Absolutely.
I think it wouldn't be mailed out unless all the towns in the district were to mail it out.
Right.
So even if the school sent it to us, we just couldn't do it.
Right.
So if, if all the schools or all the towns in the district decided to go with this?
We're saying we're doing--
Right. I, I understand that. But the cost of mail out would be--
Would be the school.
The school would pay for the town ballot to be mailed out to a little, whether it be mailed in the same envelope.
I believe if it mailed in the same envelope, then the school would pay.
That's what it says.
Who can say no to that?
It does seem like a crazy deal.
Good question. Good clarification. Further discussion? If not ready to vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no?
No.
No. Three to two. All right. How about a letter of support for the Carver Street sidewalk project?
Can you turn the disc or--
Absolutely.
So I asked Seth a couple weeks ago to draft a letter of support for our alternative program grant application for the Carver Street sidewalks that we're going to apply for in Old Number. And Seth has drafted this nice letter and I'd love that board support. And I sent the application in. I do have a letter of support from the chamber as well.
What's the pleasure of the board about the Transportation Alternatives Program Grant for a section of Carver Street sidewalks?
I have a motion that we, we support this letter of support.
Turn it. It's one letter of support. And you've already disclosed that you're a Carver Street resident. And I had disclosed--
But it doesn't go down to his house.
But it doesn't go that far.
It doesn't go that far.
All right. So motion and a second to submit the letter of support for the grant for new sidewalks on a portion of Carver Street. Is there further discussion? Well, I would just, once again, I'm really curious how far it does go down. It mentions that it doesn't reach the church. Have we decided whether it's over the top of the hill or? I'm curious if I'll be able to see it from my house.
No.
Okay.
Can you see it from my house?
I don't know.
But you can see Russia's.
Do you want to describe for the benefit of everyone the approximate bounds of this project?
From Hannah First or the second six project, not Hannah First, sorry, Brown Street.
Brown Street.
I get too many grant programs, but, um, from, well, Carver Street where we stopped second six, down to Rossiter Street on the west side and a little bit further than that on the east side. There's really about all I can tell you. If you walk down through, you can see where the sidewalks actually go from real bad in front of Bernie Carter's house to start to get good again. So that's really worth the line. I don't know what the feet is. I'd have to go out with it.
Okay, so approximately Rossiter--
We can't continue after Rossiter Street on the west side because there's a retaining wall there and we wouldn't have enough wood for ADA. So we're going to end up putting a crossing in somewhere there to get folks to the new sidewalk.
Great. Very good. Thank you for the clarification. Further public comment? Yes? Oh, okay, there was just--
Two thumbs up.
Yep. All in favor of this project, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Yeah. Item equity and inclusion in Brandon. This was offered up by Mr. Giles. You want to introduce it? Yeah. As I, I think the board knows, because I've, I've mentioned it at some past meetings, I did go to this training over the summer, promoted by the LCT and put on by NLC, that's the National League of Cities. And I've just been trying to figure out what to do with it because the training was powerful. It was important. It kind of shifted my view about equity issues. And I like to describe it as equity issues rather than specifically racial equity issues. Because while racial equity is profoundly important, I think equity is, is a, is a great umbrella to try to see this kind of work because it really serves all of us to have a more equitable community. And so I've been trying to figure out how to move forward. And I made some phone calls, as you read in the packet, and I talked with Ted Brady, who thinks that this kind of work is important and that BLCT is very interested in trying to figure out how to support this kind of work. I came up with kind of a range of, you know, possible next steps as a result of my conversations. The one, a couple of the successful communities that I spoke with have a consultant that they work with to try to get a, a view into their community that they might not have because they're so close to it. I, I contacted this real group through NLC and they actually wrote up a proposal for a series of both public meetings and staff level meetings that represent a fairly large investment. I mean, their proposal had these meetings that, that could cost between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars, which I don't think we're ready to spend. I, I discovered that the BLCT actually has on its website information, funding sources. So if we did decide we wanted to do something, there are actually places we could go to help support this kind of, this kind of work, which I thought was helpful for us. And, and so where I ended up with, which is why I put this on a, on a packet today, is, is the need to have a group of us, a working group hopefully, look at these possibilities and bring suggestions to the board about how we can help our community, you know, be as good as we can be. I, I really want Brandon to, to be doing best practice when it comes to inclusivity and equity. And so that's why I brought this to you. And I think that's, my last suggestion is the one that I'm hoping that we can formalize today, which is to have some kind of a working group, a couple of us who could look at these options and make suggestions. Thank you.
Did you, yeah. Because so, on receiving this last week, I've made some phone calls myself. So I just had a nice conversation with Ted Brady today.
Yeah.
And learned that, for those who don't know, Ted Brady is the executive director at, from all the cities and towns. And I heard kind of some pros and cons of some towns that were jumping into this a little too quickly and maybe not using the best approach or practices and getting the point across. I have spoke with, with Sue Gagenar Office and Bill Moore. He was actually been working on stuff with Cedar, which was the--
With Cedar? Chamber in Economic Development and Rural Region--
So formerly, formerly REDDIC, Rural Economic Development Corporation in the Chamber, the Rural Regional Chamber of Commerce, they merged in the middle of COVID and created a new organization that serves both needs. And, no, I'm trying to step--
What am I having to call?
So, so, so back in April, I joined their committee that's researching, that's doing work on DEI and diversity, equity, inclusion, in case people don't know. And they are thinking about adding a J, justice as well as a part of that. And going through, this is a long process. We're working with a consultant right now to work on the, the structure for Cedar, a six person operation, with the hopes of being able to bring more information to members, of which we are members. We pay our dues for REDDIC and Cedar. And it's been, it's been interesting work, but it is a process. It has to be very intentional, specific and long, and understand what our ultimate goal is. The goal for Cedar right now is to make them a more inclusive organization and again, help to work with the, the members, membership and able to bring some of these, these things that we've learned in doing that to the members of Cedar to help them become more inclusive as well.
So with that, we have been talking quite a bit about this in the office since last week and really feel that the best approach for it is to have the committee of Bill Moore, Sue Gagenar, myself to move forward with these, with this and not the Select Board. I think with, with certainly those resources and us to work closer to the league and everything else on this, we could really come up with, with a good strategy. With those, you know, those Reddicks, it's going to be time length, like a half overnight. And I think we'd be the ones that could put the time and effort, use our resources to make it happen.
So you can play the ball?
Excuse me?
Yeah, you can carry the ball. Great.
Well, yeah, I think that, you know, we should be able to do that in our, in our office. So it's--
So is the idea that, that you three would kind of do some research and exploring and connecting and that kind of thing and come to the board with some kind of proposal or, you know, conjunction with, with what Cedar's doing? Like, is the board going to hear back from it, I guess, or?
Well, I'm going to assume that we got a report back to the Select Board, but I think if we were sort of spearheading this, this, everything with this, the three of us from start to finish would be a good thing to do. We can report to the board. One thing is to look at if the employees are involved with this, even moving forward, as you know, Select Board members come and go, town managers come and go, to get something in place for that next, the next turnover and to really work with this in-house, in our town office, I think is where we need to do.
Well, there was some talk about the, the benefit of having a community involvement. So would it just be an internal staff thing? Would it actually be the possibility of maybe having a, a public, you know, meeting source? Are you open to that type of thing too?
I don't think we're there yet.
Oh, I didn't say no. I'm going to make one tomorrow.
I guess, I, I've been trying to wrap my head around this a lot too. And certainly open for everything here. But I think we need to have a plan. We need to figure out what it is we need to bring to our community in order for this to happen. And I, I don't know what that is yet. You know, we're going to have to figure that out. I think, you know, we go on, being part of Cedar and being involved with the other, how many, how many weeks into this or months into this?
We started in April and we're just getting down, we, we just completed an internal survey. So the, the employees of Cedar completed these surveys. We just went, we spent an hour and a half on Friday going over the results of that and picking some goals that we want to incorporate, you know, as a part of our next piece of doing this. Also, full disclosure, my sister, Tab the Pole Moore, Tab the Moore, runs a DEI consulting agency called Intentional Evolution. And I'm certainly, you know, not opposed to squeezing her for free work as much as I can, as she is my little sister. So.
Well, some of the communities that I spoke with have racial equity committees as part of, as one of the aspects of the board work that they do. And I, I'm wondering if there shouldn't be some, some representation from the board on, on the racial equity and the racial equity work in our community. It seems like there's a role for the board to play. And as much as I'm thrilled that you want to carry the ball and do the bulk of it, it's like, that's great. And it's, as much as I'm thrilled that you want to carry the ball and do the bulk of it, it's like, that's great, you know?
I, I, I don't agree with that, Tim, that I think, I don't think it should be a select board. A select board on a community. I think having, especially the three of us who are pretty well-known in the community too, like, you know, we do a good job working together on these things. And, um, you know, well, we've had a good history of working on things together. I think we could easily be the committee and move this forward. I also think too that with, you know, watching what Cedar's doing and seeing how, how it's worked for them with their survey and everything else, that if we see something that's already in place that's being effective, then again, we should be, we should be using that sort of template and trying to do our own as well.
So in that, hearing kind of an echo of what we talked about with energy, you know, in terms of the energy committee looking to boost existing efforts from efficiency Vermont and Heat Squad and stuff. So are you, are you thinking that your group would then, um, be sort of looking to the Cedar initiative that's already progressed further along than we are and kind of taking back on it or learning from it kind of thing? Is that, is that the idea?
Yes and yes. Or I think we're going to learn from all of it. It's like, again, what works and what doesn't. And they put a lot of time and effort into it. I think that's something that we should definitely.
And Phil, how long has Cedar been, been working on?
Just started, just started in April. And again, like this is, and we've hired a consultant, we've spent considerable funds to hire a consultant to facilitate this. Um, and, you know, out of this, I mean, the, the hope is to come up with policies that are in place within our, within our community. Certainly, I mean, obviously as it relates to the town employees, our policy manual that incorporates DEI into everything that we do, you know, whether it's recruitment and whether it's our mission statement as a town, you know. But I mean, like the things that we're able to affect, the change that we're able to affect, which is the municipal employees, you know, that's, I think that's ideally what we would end up with. And Cedar is again, you know, creating this template that they can hand out to these, to their member organizations. They've done some of this work, like this is how we did it.
Is there also BLCT models stock or not?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Bernie?
I'm content for one. I'm happy to hear this from Cedar because we're, we're still waiting to see what the new incarnation of Cedar is, of, of the Ruttland Regional Planning Commission and, and the Chamber. Because it's often.
It's not, it's not planning.
Not planning.
Economic development.
Yeah, thank you. The, it's always been very Rutland-centric and that's always been an issue that I, we've, we've brought up to them saying it's Rutland County. And if they can be, be the lead on this that really takes it to all sections of the county, then we know that we're kind of getting even flow of it out into the community. So, right, and then Proctor, which are all going to be on the same page and hopefully moving all of our equity issues towards, towards the top at the same time. How great could that be for?
That does have something to recommend, that approach.
Well, I think too that we've been more active with these folks too over the past few years, which has helped. You know, they're, um, you know, certainly has played a very big role in Reddit, you know, coming earlier, the last few years. Like, we've definitely been more active in the, in the regional committees than ever before.
Because I, I serve on the marketing committee for Cedar as well as the DEI committee. And they just recently put me on the, the actual Cedar board as of the October, my October meeting was my first meet, or, the October meeting was my first meeting on the Cedar board, so, I mean, I'm a plaintiff, you know. They're, they're willing to reach out to these different towns to, to, you know, we're in one region, we're real Rutland County, real Rutland County. So, yeah, I'm, I'm now on the full board as well, so.
So this was your initiative. What, what do you think of the?
Yeah, I'm interested in the follow-up Dave's work. Well, I'm just mine. There's two, two other folks on this committee as well, so.
Well, if you could bring information back as you get it, I'd be, I'd be interested to know how things go with it.
All right. Further public comment? Board comment? Thank you for bringing it to the board. Thank you for already having thought about it, processed it over the, I don't know how long you've seen it, but I saw it Friday afternoon. We can move on to item 11, it was a purchase order for salt, a thousand tons of salt. That sounds like a lot of salt.
So this is the blanket purchase order we do every year. We did get some, went up two dollars and thirty-one cents from last year, was significantly less than what was state price was, so we're not sure what happened there. But we do this every year, just so we're sure. And that's, we used less last year, but.
Just want to ask you, that's for the year, right?
That's for the year. That's one stone.
What's that?
That's one stone.
Yeah.
No, it's for the year.
What's the pleasure of the board regarding a purchase order authorization for up, up to a thousand tons of road salt from Carrville at seventy-two thirty-one a ton?
Square it.
Mr. Carr, he was to approve. Mr. Wyman, second. Discussion or public comment on salt? If not ready to vote, all in favor of approval of the order, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. How about the general fund warrant?
I'm going to have the motion to approve that one. Two hundred and ninety-six thousand, hundred and seventeen dollars.
Six cents. Coolidge votes to approve the warrant. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second for Mr. Wyman. Any questions on any of the bills? No, very straightforward. All in favor of approval of the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions?
Okay, I have a chance to look at it.
One abstention?
No, it wasn't one in your table. And it wasn't stopped anything?
It was not. I just want to pay you questions, if anybody else.
Uh, any suggestions for the good of the community? Announcements, job vacancies, things like that? Yes, you always have someone, Bill? Oh, Stephanie's going. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Uh, thank you. I was undermissed, uh, speaking earlier, not mentioning redistricting. And, um, there's been a couple of articles in the Rutland Herald, the AS Independent, about the, um, redistricting that's happening throughout the state or on every ten years after the census. The legislative enforcement board looks at the populations and the district and the, um, and how to, how to be fair representation in the legislature. And this year they, uh, would like to have a hundred and fifty one-person districts. That'd be a big change, um, for Brandon, for the Sudbury. And, um, their proposal is that we go back to how Brandon used to be many years ago and there'd be one representative for the town of Brandon because of our population. Um, met the threshold of about forty-one hundred people. So that is a proposal. And if that proposal will then go to the legislature, to the government operations committee, they'll look at it and make another decision about whether that's fair and whether they believe that it's a fair representation. And then it'll be voted on by the general assembly. So I just wanted to let you know that I am going to be reaching out to all the members of the, um, Board of Civil Authority. Just give it, if you have any questions, I'm happy to give you the history of reinforcement in the state and, um, talk about, uh, the, how it would look for, for Brandon, um, with only one, having one representative rather than two representatives. So, thank you. I just want to mention that. And, uh, Fattella, I will be reaching out to you. Thanks.
Thank you. And I, I believe the Board of Civil Authority is going to convene on November 2nd to discuss this. So the Board of Civil Authority is the select board members and the justices of the peace and the town clerk. So if any member of the public has anything that they would like to offer, they could attend the meeting in person or they could, um, speak with one of the board members. Mr. Wyman, I still had his voice. I had his hand up.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know the Otter Creek Communication Union District had our meeting last week. We're, we're moving, we're getting closer to, uh, having a high-level engineering study done, which will then inform a business plan about how we proceed. Um, it looks like at first blush, in second blush actually, that our, our path forward with, uh, spreading broadband throughout the region, uh, is going to require some creative partnerships with incumbent providers. And, uh, just giving you guys a heads up on that. And that, yeah, yeah, those, those meetings are all online and we can attend and we have minutes online. And I wanted to give a special shout-out to Selectman Markowski for bleeding the furnace tonight and getting the heat back on here in the town hall basement.
They can pay the hard money for it.
There you go.
Don't knock tools off.
I read it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Anything else before we do a couple of executive sessions? All right, if not, thank you all for being here tonight and we'll call the board at recess at eight twenty.